I'm moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Member out of pocket?
Yes.
Want to abstain?
Right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is a superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening. Welcome. We'll start off with a personnel update. Hope everybody's doing well this evening. I am happy to say there's really not a lot to report on personnel. We have no retirees tonight, no new hires, no resignations, and no transfers. The positions that are vacant are the same positions. They've been staying that way for a while. We continue to hire and look for ABA positions and the grade seven math teacher, but they seem to be staying pretty steady. I do want to update the committee that, and we'll be learning a little bit more about this in the meeting later, that we may be coming back to you for some requests in the near future. Our, we've had a lot of move-ins and fluent changes recently. Some changes with our nursing and needing additional supports because of some care. So we are assessing those needs and we will evaluate them at an upcoming meeting. So just to give you a heads up, that might be on the way. So other than that, under personnel, there's not too much to talk about. Moving on, under instructional leadership, as you know, on Tuesday, September 24th, MCAS scores were released across the state. The team here is in the process of reviewing the data and we are preparing a presentation for you at our next school committee meeting where we will go over a high-level view of the results and update of the work that we're in the progress of. So we will bring that to you at the next school committee meeting. Next, during the 23-24 school year, as you know, Webster participated in the special education and civil rights monitoring review called the Tier Focus Monitoring Review. Every school district undergoes a monitoring review every three years. And the purpose of this review is to monitor compliance with regulatory requirements focusing on special education and civil rights. Tonight, Ms. Shari here will present the TFM reports and the findings on that report. Ms. Shari?
Good evening. So I am pleased to share with the school committee that out of the 15 areas that were reviewed by the Department of Education, we were found compliant in all areas. So there'll be no corrective action needed. There were 18 areas under civil rights, of which 14 were rated as compliant. There was one that was compliant with comment and three that were partially implemented, which means that we need to take corrective action on them. Of the three areas that we need to take corrective action on, one has already been addressed through the school committee where we had you review a handbook. So that's already been taken care of and we will be working on improving in the area of student discipline and physical restraint. The remedy to this is to work with our liaison from the Department of Education to develop a corrective action plan. We have a meeting in the near future to do this. And then the findings were essentially very positive. Any questions?
I just want to say this was a lot of work over the year, a lot of documentation, a lot of back and forth with the Department of Ed. And I'm very pleased and I just want to congratulate the team on their work as I know it's a big effort putting that forward and getting all the documentation ready. But it's also a great process. You know, what are we doing well? What are we not doing well? What do we need to work on? So it's always great to have that outside person or eyes taking a look, telling us what we can correct and making sure we address those. So I want to congratulate the department on an excellent job. Any questions? No? All right, continuing on under management and operations. Oh, there's one more thing under that. As you know, the high school principal has been posted. We posted that on school spring internally. I have put a schedule for the process in your packet. I sent notice out to staff today. And notice will be also, has also gone out to parents as we begin this process. So we look forward to having that underway. And now moving on to management and operations. Overall, the district is operating very smoothly. There's a lot going on on a daily basis around campus, in our buildings and outside of our buildings. We have all of our meetings, all of our instructional meetings, our budget meetings, our DLT meetings, everything, safety meetings, everything is scheduled for the entire year. We here at the central office are working at being more visible in our schools and being more present to see what's going on and to offer our support to the staff. We also have met as a district team with the schools reviewing our enrollment processes. As you know, we went to online enrollment about a year ago. Last year was our first full year with it fully implemented. So we met to say, what are we, are we missing anything? How can we better connect with our families? How's the process working? And is there anything that we need to adjust or tweak moving forward? So I think right now it feels good to have everybody in. Things have settled. The year is underway. And I look forward to just continuing that positive momentum we have going now. The other item I'd like to talk about is school safety. As you know, school safety is always at the top of our list here. That's our number one priority, providing a safe, supportive, learning environment for everybody. As you know, around the world, there is more and more situations of concerns. Where you, you know, with the recent events in Georgia with the school shooting, how can we better prepare and be more prepared for events? As we hope they never happen and we don't want to see them happen. But like anything else, it's always good to know and be trained and be ready to respond accordingly. In this school district, we have often, we have gone for the past few years through ALICE training. ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. We have done that across the district and all of our buildings, probably for, I want to say at least six-plus years. And it's really, the training has been with the staff and it's stopped there. This year, when we were meeting with our safety team, the committee discussed rolling this out to students and including some training for our student body. So we're exploring how to roll that out within our different schools and age group. Anything that we decide will be communicated out to our families first to address any concerns. And our ultimate goal is to ensure that our staff and students are informed to make appropriate decisions. Again, this is all age-appropriate. We will not do anything without discussing it with our families, making sure that they're hearing concerns. But there are other districts out there that practice like anything else. I know Bay Path is practicing ALICE with their high school kids. We practice fire drills. We practice lockdowns. We've practiced evacuations. We've taught our little one-stop-drop role. There are certain things that you just learn by doing. It's just, you know, becomes practice. So we're going to look at how to do that, what it would entail, and really try and find the best way that we can roll it out with reassuring and not causing anxiety because that's what we want to do, safety, but not cause fear. So are there any questions about that?
Through the chair. Monique, when you say "training for the students," do you mean practicing?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to kind of clarify that.
What are we doing and why are we doing it?
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? No? Okay. And then in management, as you know, I can't believe it, but we're getting into budget season already. We are now talking FY '26. So we're closing out '24, we're living '25, and we're starting to talk about '26. I know Ms. Conto says send initial templates out to the administrative teams. And we have that all planned out for the year, so we will start having our meeting shortly. It is, I can't even believe the time is going so fast. And then in other updates, the district received the Webster Five Grant in the amount of $7,500. This grant pays for students at Park Ave and Webster Middle School to attend Old Sturbridge Village. So we are happy about that and excited that we can continue that partnership. They've been supportive of us for a few, for a few years now. I was also able to attend the mashup on Wednesday, September 25th, with Ms. Bigelow and her Advanced Manufacturing Students, which was held at Gillette Stadium. It was a great day for us students who got to network with companies and take part in some innovation challenges across the conference. And I can tell you, I am always, I always hear about how positive our students are when they are out within the community and out at events. And I was so pleased to witness this by myself and so impressed by some of the creativity I saw within the challenges. They actually had a challenge where they had to, they were given cardboard and they had to create a structure that could hold so much weight by weights that they were given. And so they had about 30, 35 minutes to come up. And all they were given were boxes, maybe a little bit of tape and some scissors. So our students got together and teamed and they designed boxes where they had cross joints that were cut in throughout the entire box. They had, I want to say, five or six kids standing on the boxes, not weights. They had students standing on the boxes. It was quite impressive that the work that they did. And it was just really great to see the positive energy coming from all of them. So that was a lot of fun and I was so happy I could be there to see it. And then on more exciting news, on Thursday, the 26th, our full leadership team had an hour and a half training on our Title IX regulations that went into effect on August 1st, 2024. As you can imagine, that was a, you know, a nail-biter of a training. But it's very important and it's something that we need to do and we need to live. And we really do need to pay attention to that because it's very important. I tease and I joke, but it's a reality and it's something that we should take seriously and that we really need to make sure that we're addressing appropriately when those situations come up. So. And then lastly, on my report. So tonight, we have our few guests here. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents have designed an award for academic excellence. This award is given to a high school student who has distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. The Mass Association of School Superintendents has chosen to give this award at the beginning of the year. So students who receive this award may include it in his or her credential package when applying to colleges. They don't want this to get lost. They know at the end of the year, there are many awards going out. And they really want this to be something that they can utilize as they're going into college. The number of certificates awarded is based on the size of your graduating class. For our graduating, for 0 to 250, you're only, you're allowed to give out one award for your high school class. The criteria for the selection is that this is a three-year cumulative average, your rank in your class, and the personal selection by the superintendent. And I have leeway within a certain percentage in the top of the class. This year, I am happy and proud to announce that this year's award for academic excellence is Adam Phillips. Currently, Adam is first in his class with a GPA of 12.62. He is currently enrolled in four AP courses and has maintained his GPA while playing sports, which is soccer and baseball, through his career at Bartlett. I don't know if you've ever seen Adam on the field and off the field. He is a truly kind young man who is hardworking and who is just somebody that exemplifies what it is to be a Bartlett graduate. He is just, he shines on the field and off the field. And I am very happy to give this award to Adam. And thank you for representing the high school so well. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Do you want to say anything, Adam? A man of many words. I just want to say thank you for being so wonderful. And you know, when I talked to Ms. Nieves about, you know, who we were thinking this award should go to, she did not hesitate. And she said, she said, "The first name that comes to my mind is Adam and he is very deserving." So I just want to thank you for all your efforts and great job. Thank you.
Congratulations, Adam.
You know what? Can I take a picture? This is a good one to put on the website, Adam. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
And once again, Adam, congratulations on a stellar high school career. We can't wait to see where you go. We're very proud of you. The next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Contos.
Good evening, everyone. I go from photography to financials. I prefer photography. So this evening, I'm going to focus my update on the year-to-date budget. I don't have any new updates relative to the school building project and the key milestones that I provided at the last meeting or any significant building maintenance update. So we'll focus on quarter one, year-to-date budget for fiscal year '25. In your packet, you do have the full year-to-date budget. What I'll point out to you is if you look at the overall percentage spent at this point, we're just a little over 25%, which somewhat marks with where we are relative to the year. What I'll point out with that 25% is that reflects actual expenditures year-to-date as well as encumbered money or committed money in the budget. And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. As you look through the budget, you'll see various percentages spent. There are a lot of items in this budget where we do a lot of front-loading on our spending. So if it's to kick off the school year and we're buying materials or supplies, a lot of that is purchased starting during the summer and at the beginning of the school year. So you'll see a lot of line items in there where those numbers are a little bit on the higher side, but that's to be expected because of how we order early on. The key area of focus that I want to hone in on for you, and you'll see it on page 16, but I will jump right into it. It's, it's relative to our special education tuitions. What we've seen, and both Shari and Kathy can get into this in a little bit more detail, but at the start of the school year, we had many more enrollments this year with people moving into the district with IEP plans that required the district to respond to that. As a result of that, we are seeing a projected deficit in our sped budget by close to $342,000. That is really accounting for both our budgeted money as well as applying circuit breaker to the budget as we had planned in here. You see those items on page 16. And the majority of that, as I said, is a result of people moving into the district. And I will tell you, I ran this last week and I came back after two days off only to find out we had more people who have enrolled, which could potentially have some changes on this projection that I gave you. I don't think we know enough at this point to really assess that. But the Special Ed Department will be digging into that. So at this point, this is an area that we will continue to monitor as we progress through the year. You may recall last year that when we saw the projection going higher than we thought, we had to implement a budget freeze. So we are going to continue to monitor this as we go through the year and then make that decision as we progress on areas that we may have to hold back spending on as a result of these tuition increases. The Special Education Department also does their circuit breaker submissions. I don't know if we'll have an opportunity for extraordinary relief again this year, but that will be something that we will also explore. So let me pause there to see if there's any questions.
I'll just clarify. It sounds like we're on track with most of the things within our budget that we can control. Obviously, students moving into the district that have needs, we can't control that. And that's where we're a little, well, quite behind budget, $342,000, right?
Yeah, we're tracking on target with every other area that we'd expect to. Yep. You're welcome. And that concludes my report for tonight. It's pretty brief.
Thank you, Mrs. Contos.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the principal report. And joining us this evening from Bartlett High School is Ms. Gina Nieves. Good evening, Ms. Nieves.
Good evening. All right, so the first thing I want to talk about is our NIOSC visit, which is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's an update. We were scheduled for our collaborative conference visit for this December. I've reached out since I just began and together we asked for a postponement and we were granted it. So we're going to be now, our next visit will be in December of next year. And then the larger visit, the, will happen in the following December, so two years out. Okay? So we'll start that this year. We'll be writing our, we'll be posting for our two positions to help with our writing and form a steering committee and write our self-reflection this year. So it's finished before we leave school this year and ready for the start of school the year next year. I can jump into the school improvement plan next. All right, so this year, we're going to continue. This is the final year of the school improvement plan for '24-'25. And we're going to continue to focus on a safe and supportive environment, increase student engagement through the use of grade-level instruction and materials, particularly the English language learners and students with disabilities, and increasing two-way communication with families in culturally responsive ways. So our first priority for a safe and supportive learning environment, we focused on strengthening our Tier One PBIS system throughout our building, reviewing and revising our current matrix. We did that this summer and presented it throughout the school year. We have led initiatives focused on appropriate behavioral expectations for the students and the staff as they come in. We are increasing, hoping to increase our family engagement activity opportunities and merge family events with our parent conferences. We have tacos with teachers event coming up and a pasta with parent conferences in the spring, hoping to draw more families in. We use Bartlett bucks at the high school, so we've broadened that. We are starting a school store for the students. That's in the works right now where the students can purchase items with their Bartlett bucks. Right now, they can get into sports games and some of our dances and other events that we have. And we really focused on the decrease of cell phones in our classrooms. We have put in a PBIS initiative of cellphone holders on the back of the doors and hoping that the students utilize those. We say that, you know, it's best to keep them in there, but if we don't see them, then it's not an issue. They do earn Bartlett bucks if their phone remains in the holders the whole time. Also, within this area, we talked about implementation of Tier Three supports. So we have implemented the Bright program at the high school. We have trained our staff throughout the end of the summer and into the school year of September. We've said, the team has set guidelines and processes for student enrollment in the program. And we just recently rolled that out with our staff at the most recent faculty meeting. We had the Bright program staff come in and train our staff. And we have a pretty strict guideline to select students based on certain criteria. And they can be referred through multiple, multiple different ways. They, through guidance, through admin, through our at-risk. We have a, we just started an at-risk student referral where all teachers can input to our student support services every week. So if they see something that we don't necessarily see as admin or guidance, they can refer through that way also. So that's one way we'll look at the students for the program. When they're in the program, we create student support plans and then we'll evaluate the program's success as we go through. I've shared with Ms. Millet, she has a card that you can actually scan in, that our program staff, we have an academic coordinator and a clinical coordinator and an instructional assistant in the program. And they've created that where you could, if you scan that, it explains the program. So we give that to the parents as they're, and the students as they're having their intake meetings. I can talk a little bit, I'll just, I'll talk about it now so we don't go back to the Bright. But we currently have three students enrolled with two on a pre-referral list waiting to see if they are going to join. It is a voluntary program. So we meet with the students and we have some interviews and go through the requirements. And we really are focusing on the students that have been hospitalized or returning from hospitalization or they have mental health, significant mental health needs that they just haven't received services for. So those are some of the criteria that we look at for the kids. In the last area within this part, we did the implementation of our school-wide social-emotional learning. This year, we have asked our counseling staff to use, they're going to be using the Second Step high school curriculum. And through once a month, they are going to roll out one lesson school-wide through the use of our homerooms, starting with those lessons and then eventually hoping later in this year to roll it out, even within our academic classes, pieces of this curriculum. For our priority two, academic success, we have, we are looking at the implementation of the Open SIAID curriculum into all of our biology classes. They are going through specific unit trainings throughout the year. They'll be implementing that curriculum, assessing the curriculum throughout the year during their PLCs and lessons and, you know, using the Power School grades and just the growth, the student growth data along the way and determine how to move ahead with eventually moving this into both of our chemistry as well as our physics classes as well. We are looking to increase the writing skills for all students across all areas. We have recently rolled out our new school-wide rubric. And the teachers are gathering data as we speak and we'll be doing this ongoing. But we will be using a protocol to dive into that data to see how these students are doing and how to move forward and what we need to implement along the way. So that's, that's started already this past month. Our instructional coaching cycles are going on. So there's a calendar that's set up. Our coaches, our, our providing the, our coach is providing the well-structured lessons with focus on instructional priority. And they're reviewing as they go along for need for further intervention with teachers. We have set up our professional learning communities throughout the building where they meet on a weekly basis multiple times to, you know, look at areas of growth, review the curriculum plan together with their lessons, with targeted instruction and supports, and review the outcomes and again, what comes next and do that together as a team. We have our career and technical education implemented where we plan to schedule to allow for students to participate in internships. This year, last year, we were able to do it at the end of the year. We already have our internships going, so our students are out in the fields, some of which are at our three buildings, but they're already out in businesses throughout the community as well. The third priority for culturally responsive instructional practices, we are doing walkthroughs with our building, not just our district walkthroughs, but we have already started our calendar for our monthly in-building walkthroughs as well, where we will focus at least two with the district and at least, like I said, one within our building as well. We are using high-quality instructional materials. And we're looking at, making sure our curriculum is implemented with fidelity throughout the year. And as we go through, providing training for resources provided by the curriculum as needed for Studies CINC, our CPM and our Open SIAID. We also have our language acquisition team that meets once a month, where we meet to assess the English language learners' process through looking at scores and grades and the I-Radi data. We monitor, looking at the monitoring forms, their opt-out forms, their student success forms throughout the year. And we'll do that on a monthly basis going forward. And our last one is the family and community engagement. So we've read off the, right from the beginning of the year, we've asked students, parents, sorry, to identify their preferred mode of communication. We have increased our family enrollment and use of whole-school class dojo. So we've asked all of our teachers to implement dojo as well as one way to communicate. And I also And I also send out weekly updates to parents via dojo. And I, and we have over, about ninety percent of our parents on there, so it is a good tool right now with our high school. I do a, on top of the weekly updates on dojo, I do the same thing with our staff and our students as well for everything. It's like a newsletter, but via email or dojo. And then we have, this isn't on yours, and I thought about it after I had submitted it. We have, I've worked with the middle school right since I started this year to create our parent advisory council, and I have sent out my initial asking for parents. So I'm hoping that in November, we can have our first meeting. I don't have anyone back as of right yet, but that's, that's started. Then we have teacher and family communication as one of the strategies. And then our family and community events. We hope to increase the amount of engagement activities, not just through our PBIS, but our curriculum and career nights. We're hoping to implement at least one of those this year, as well as, just again, how we inform all of our families. We, we've increased that. So hopefully, with all of that, our numbers and all of our events go up as well. Questions on the school improvement plan?
Thank you for the updates.
You're welcome.
So when it comes to identifying families' preferred mode of communication, that's something that's already happened?
Yeah, we do that right at the beginning of the year. And then if we don't get the, that back from them, we are still reaching out. So we just sent out a second set of forms and calls and dojo messages to try to reach them, as well as the regular mail as well to get in touch with them.
Cover all your bases from the beginning there?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Dojo will be a continuation from all three schools at this point, so parents will not have a new system to be learning.
Right. I did it over the summer, so I actually got the eighth-grade parents before they even left the middle school, so they were kind of rolled already in.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Through the chair. For the dojo, are you sending out it in Spanish and Portuguese as well?
So right now, we're doing, we're, we've taught our families, or we've sent out the information on how to do the translations, so I don't send out every message translated. We did the, like, the lesson on how to translate, so we didn't have to send out everyone in all of the languages.
But thank you. Sounds efficient. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
I just have a couple little things left. So we have changed our journey program a little bit. Last year, a lot of the times, it was called lockout. So it is journey. It's back to, we do do our attendance, our tardies in through journey, where parents do get the immediate notification if their student's late, not just for school now, as well as for classes as well. But we have re-implemented our Tier One program for students that are in need for, you know, just maybe that breather, maybe that quick walk to kind of decompress or regroup in a classroom, not just on a student's end, but the teacher's end as well. They may notice something that the student can't self-recognize. So we are trying that. We're tracking the data to see the, how often students and which students are using the program, and that will hopefully, in the long run, lead to our need for a possible Tier Two program, where we identify certain students that may need just a little bit more. That's the one piece that, right now, we don't have in regards to the behavioral piece. So that's the hope. We've started using the e-Pass system up at the high school to also track that data. We've now collected some data and setting some, you know, restrictions and changing some, some things to be more efficient and have these students in the classrooms, rather than a lot of the times in the hallways. So we're able to get some good data from that already. And the only other thing I have is the Unified Sports Update. We have re-implemented our Unified Basketball team. They had their first game today. I haven't heard if, how we did on the, the team yet, on the game yet, but they have a total of four games this season, so today was number one. And I don't want to steal too much from Hope, but I have upcoming events. We have our, well, it's homecoming week this week, so we had our kickoff pep rally today instead of yesterday because of the rain. And then we have the, we have the volleyball game today. We have our football game on Friday with the Friday night, our first night game. And then Saturday night's our dance, and we'll end the week with our soccer, home soccer game on Monday. We have our PBIS trunk-or-treat event for the community on Sunday, October 20th, paired with a yearbook event called Haunted Hallways later that night on the 20th as well. We have our first Nichols Leadership Academy field trip starting up this month, and then our National Honor Society induction invites will be going out, and that is going to be on Wednesday, the 30th at 6:30. And that's all I have.
That's a lot. Thanks for the updates.
Sorry.
No, no, it's perfect. Any other questions or comments from the committee, from Ms. Neves? Thanks for your updates. The next item on the agenda is the Student Representative Update. Good evening, Hope.
Good evening. I have a lot of the same things Ms. Neves has regarding Unified Basketball having their first game today, and the score was thirty-eight to thirty-five. Not us, but we, it was close. It was close. Volleyball also has having their home games, they're pink-out themed. They're doing bake sales. The bakes, the proceeds from the bake sales are going to Harrington Cancer Center for the month of October. We have tomorrow, the golf team will be hosting the 2024 Swickle Championship in Harrisville, which is in Woodstock. We also have our varsity football game Friday against David Proudy for our homecoming game, and then the Homecoming Dance this Saturday. Tickets for the Homecoming Dance are still for sale. Up until Friday, they are twenty dollars, and all dues must be up to date in order to purchase. Some past, like, updates that I have are, the seniors had their college fair on the second. We had a lot of schools come. We also had trade schools come. We had people, the school that was targeted more towards cosmetology to kind of reach out to a different group of students. We had our senior breakfast last Thursday, the third, and with that, we also took our senior group picture. Internships have begun, thanks to Ms. Biggs and all of the different companies that we are working with, including Park Ave and the middle school. We have Haunted Hallways, October 20th. This will include, it's open to all ages, and it'll include candy, like, kind of more of a haunted house theme. So it'll have attractions to walk through the hallway. We'll be decorating while people dressed up. And then for upcoming, like, information that students and families should know, we have parking passes need to be, like, received by any student drivers. They have to be updated if you already have one. And if you don't already have one, they're, they have them in the main office, so you can get, get all your information in and make sure that you have your parking pass. The, we have Spirit Week currently going on, and we had our pep rally today. We have cap and gown sizes. The form has been sent out, along with, we're now taking the money for these cap and gowns. We have the sophomores that are selling pies up until October 21st, and we have progress reports going out this Friday. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you for your updates.
Of course, lots going on.
What's going so far?
Very good. It's busy, but it's very good.
Hard to believe progress reports already.
Yeah, it's gone by very quick already. It's already the middle, almost, not the middle, but October.
Yeah, it's well underway.
Yeah. Very busy so far.
Sounds like a lot going on, though. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? The next item on the agenda under Old Business is a monthly fundraising update. So as a reminder, the role of the school committee is simply to review fundraising activities. The approvals are done at the building level. There's a number of fundraisers in our packet. Trying to find the tab that has all of them here. So I'll just run through them quickly. The Thanksgiving pie is being sold by the class of 2027, class of 2026 concessions at the Homecoming Dance, class of 2025, selling the Homecoming Dance tickets, Decca Homecoming tie-dye t-shirts, class of 2025 baked goods, class of 2028 Papaginos, Haunted Hallways Walk and Bake Sale, the Cheerleading Bake Sales t-shirts and pink ribbons, PBIS tacos and talk with teachers, PBIS trunk-or-treat, and the Boys' Varsity Soccer Buckhill Barbecue. Any questions or comments from the committee about all of those fundraisers? Lots happening.
Lots going on. And I'd just like to thank everybody who participates and donates and continues to give in all of these. So thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a second reading of Policy ACA, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex.
This was an update.
And then Policy ACA B, Sexual and Sex-Based Harassment and Retaliation. That's also a second reading of that policy.
Yep, updates, yep.
And Policy ACAR, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex under Title IX, Including Sex-Based Harassment, second reading.
This was new, yep.
Yep. Second reading of Policy ACGA, Civil Rights Grievance Procedure.
Another new ad, yep.
And then second reading of Title IX, Sexual Discrimination Grievance Procedure. That's Policy ACGB. Let's see here. That's all of the second readings on those policies.
Yes, thank you.
The next item on the agenda under New Business is the Discussion and Approval of the Superintendent Goals for the School Year 2024, 2025.
Thank you. So in your packet, you should have a copy of my goals for the upcoming year. As you can see, that you will not see a lot of difference from last year, as many of them are continuous goals. For me, last year was building an overarching system of collaboration and data review, which helps guide our instruction over, overall, overarching in the system for our instruction. And I think we did that, and we put some good systems in place. So this year, a lot of the focus is going to be continuing those systems and getting to the action steps that are needed to show that growth and improvement, now that we have the structures in place for that to happen. We are already underway with that work. So I don't know if you want me to go through the goals one by one where they're similar. I can just, you know, highlight again, one, the instructional leadership is using the data points for FY 2024 for improvements and providing support to all teachers in the district, our instructional priority. My management operations was over, again, working with the renovation project. This is going to be ongoing for the next two years. It takes a lot of time and monitoring, making sure that we're providing safe and supportive areas, safe and supportive schools, keeping things in line where we can still have instruction going on on a daily basis and not being distracted by the renovation that's living around us. And I think we're doing okay with that. I think, we try. We have systems in place, check and balances in place if there are concerns out there. But I hope that students would come forward if, you know, there's something that's distracting or something that's interrupting the learning within the building. So we're just, that dip-sticking and checking to make sure that things are operating smoothly and that we're on top of everything we need to keep this a safe learning environment. Another key for the superintendent is the budget. Working on this year, upcoming budget FY '26, and working with the town, hoping that, making sure that we have what we need to provide the environment that we're in here and a safe learning environment. Then we have our family and community engagement, which is high on our list, looking for ways to connect and bring families in and having them partner with us in their students' learning. And then, again, working with our curriculum director to develop an ongoing professional development plan to ensure a continuum of meaningful professional development, which we are working on. We have a plan in place for the year, and we're really focusing this year on really, how is all the professional learning tying into our instructional priority, making sure it's targeted, and that we're, you know, focusing on our instructional strategies and our Tier One learning that needs to happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Pranchely.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee with regard to these goals? Hearing not entertain a motion to approve these goals as presented.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the Acceptance of Donations in the amount of $500 for PBIS from the John Dowd family to the Webster Middle School.
Yep. We'd like to accept the donation for $500, and we'd like to thank the John Dowd family for their generosity and supporting PBIS at our Webster Middle School.
Wonderful. Well, thank you to the family for their donation. Is there any questions or comments from the committee related to the donation? Hearing not entertain a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, motion passes. And then next item on the agenda, under the review, Transfer Signing of Warrants, Bills, Payroll, and Vouchers Before We Approve the Warrant, is a transfer request in the amount of $9,425.46, and that is going from the Webster Middle School Student Activity Savings Account to the checking account. Is there any discussion around that transfer request? Hearing not entertain a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, meaning adjourned. Good night, everyone.